Wake them up.
Ready? Court will come to order. It is Monday, October the 27th, 2025. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kerr County Commissioners' Court is now in session. If you would, please rise for the prayer and the pledge, which will be led by Commissioner Holt.
If you bow your heads and pray with us today. Here at our Commissioners' Court, we want to pray for all God's blessings throughout this fall season. And it feels like fall for all of us this week. And we're especially mindful, it's not just a normal season, but it's also a season of voting. So, God, we want to pray that everyone's granted safety to and from the polls early and then on later for voting on Election Day. But we're also mindful about Halloween coming up very soon in our neighborhoods and in our communities. Please keep all those little kiddos and parents safe as they wander the streets at night. And guide us in these decisions that we make today, that they're always in your name. We pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Please be seated. Now, the court is in session. First thing we do is we turn off these little machines, or turn them to vibrate, so they do not disturb the proceedings. And then with that, the first item of business on a regular Commissioners' Court meeting is public input. This is an opportunity for the court to hear what the public wants to input to us. It is not an opportunity for us to offer output back. That has to be on an agenda item. So with that, I have two people that have signed up to speak. First, I want to recognize Judge Kahoon. If you would, go ahead and go to the podium.
I just wanted to introduce myself, Judge. Commissioners, thank you for giving me a moment just to tell you who I am. I'm Kirsten Kahoon. I'm the judge of the 451st, used to be part of the 216th many years ago, if you all remember that. And lately, this past summer, your governor appointed me to try and fill the shoes of Judge Abels and become the sixth administrative region presiding judge. And you, as the Commissioners, each year you support your sixth administrative judicial region. We sent you a bill and you faithfully pay it, and I'm appreciative of your support. And since we haven't met, some of us have met around town occasionally. I wanted just to introduce myself. I wanted to tell you thank you for the support of all of the judges in the sixth region. Let you have a face with a name. And if you need me at all, you can always call me down at the 451st and get me at any time through Mateo Santos or Becky Henderson. I come once a week. I have a FOB to get in. Once a week, I come to Kerr County Courthouse and take care of the region business. So if you ever need me, please feel free to reach out and let me know. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signed up to speak is Gabriel Peralas.
Yes, sir.
And you're with the SBA.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Gabriel Peralas, Public Affairs Specialist with the United States Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And I'm here to share a couple of new items that have surfaced since me coming back. I actually ended up leaving California for a couple of weeks, but now that I'm back, I felt compelled to share that there's a few updates, and I wanted to share them with the court and those that are present with regards to the resources available for those that may have been impacted with the flooding that occurred on July 2nd. So the first thing that has transpired is the original application deadline of September 28th. SBA is now offering a 60-day grace period, and thus taking us to November 27th for any business, homeowner, renter, or nonprofit who, for whatever reason, may have missed the original September 28th application deadline. Now, while the DRCs, or what we call the Disaster Recovery Centers, may have closed, SBA continues to have one of our business recovery centers. And so folks that are still interested in receiving assistance with their applications can still walk in there in person right across the street at the First Perspectarian Church at the library to get help in filling out their application, whether it be for physical damage or economic injury. So, again, that 60-day period is now November 27th, and it is for SBA resources only. Now, the second item is that there are a couple of new counties that have actually now been identified and have been moved from what we call contiguous counties, where they were only eligible for economic resources. Now they're eligible for physical damage as well. And those new counties are now Coke, Concho, Kendall, Mason, and Sutton. And those new counties can also now start applying for physical damage resources as well. And their deadline is going to be November 14th for the actual original physical damage application deadline. With that being said, it will also extend economic injury out to June 15th for those specific counties. And for the original 60-day extension that I just referenced, that economic injury deadline is till April 6th. So again, economic injury has a longer timeframe for which one could apply for resources. But from a physical damage standpoint, we're excited to share with Kerr County residents and let them know that if they still need assistance, we're here in person, or they can still continue to apply online at sba.gov/disaster. So, thank you so much. And, you know, if we can continue to get the cooperation of Kerr County to share this information through their channels, I would greatly appreciate it.
And because we are on YouTube, and this will be posted on our website, go through those counties, the new counties again. There was Coke, Concho, Kendall, and Sutton.
Mason and Sutton.
Mason.
Mason and Sutton. And their application filing deadline is November 14th of this year.
Okay. We'll make sure that's on our website.
Perfect. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public input? There being none, we'll move on to Commissioners' comments. Precinct one.
Judge, I've got a couple of things this morning. First off, congratulate Charlie Hastings. He's got a new grandbaby, first one. So that's always a big step. So, a lot of prayers for you and your family and this new baby. I went to the Gunny's Warriors event a week ago. It was incredibly well-attended, honorable event, and I really enjoyed being there. And I'm glad we support them as strongly as we do here. It's worth everybody attending if you've never been out there for their opening event.
Now, you can say the last name, right? Be a cherry.
Yes, yes. Well, I've learned. I try not to say it in case I mess it up.
It's Italian.
It is, yes. But if you've never been, you need to go this next year. So the flag event's just beautiful. Update on the debris. Ash brit in the west portion of the county is 100% complete on all of their clean-up. Serious is at about probably what, Don, you think about 95%, 96% complete? And that includes most of the right-of入s, the ROEs. That's been done. They've done an incredibly good job. And to some people's views, maybe too much of a good job, right? Because now we've got our riparian recovery group that's having to come in and try to figure out how to get things back and restore the riverbank to where we don't have a lot of erosion and those types of things. And I served on that group with Katie back here, and we have a lot of fun going through and a learning moment for us. And then the burn ban, at some point, we'd probably ought to consider trying to move that back. Because we do have most of the stuff completed in that river corridor, might give some thought to that.
Well, they haven't released anything yet.
No.
Right.
It's in place.
Right.
And so it's still the thousand-foot barrier.
Right, right. But when we start getting these rains, if we get some of these fall rains and stuff, we've got people chomping at the bits. I've had three or four calls already, one this morning even, and I told them I would bring it up, so I'm going to bring it up and see how y'all feel about it as a court and see what y'all want to do. If you want to keep it where it's at right now to the judge, whatever we need to do is appropriate. I'm with that. So anyhow, that's about it.
Two. Okay. Well, speaking of the burn ban, you know, we still have a countywide burn ban in place. And we have had a few burn ban violations over the weekend. You know, the public seemed to think we'd get a little bit of rain and it's okay to burn, and it's not. What the public needs to understand is that we have so much dead grass and material out there that it's what firefighters call one-hour fuel. Because an hour after the rain, in this area, it's dry enough, that stuff will go up quick. So this would be the time to try to mow some of that stuff down and get rid of it. But if you've got a lot of long, tall grass, you better be really careful whenever we do lift the ban. And I would support lifting the countywide ban and putting it back into the individual precinct, the Commissioners' hands, but that's how you can make.
That's on capacity, you'll see.
Okay. Next, just so everybody's aware, you know, in our last session, we approved a donation of a 50-foot, I think it's a red oak tree, anyway, 50-foot tree for Flat Rock Park. And so I met with Shane Evans, and we've come up with a good location and informed the donors where it's going to be.
Spirit of liberty.
Yeah. So, that's taken care of. We also had a good conference call with FEMA regarding accepting donations, particularly in our parks to replace equipment that was lost. So anyway, we'll discuss that later on in separate agenda items. I've been attending the weekly flood warning system team meetings and making good progress. We're working on the flood warning system performance requirements in preparation, you know, to put out requests for proposals. Last week, attended the FFA debate team's debate on both sides of the debris removal issue, which was, it's an important topic. It was, they did a great job. They always do. But I congratulate the, it's the Ingram FFA team. And it gives you real comfort about the future of the county with those kind of leaders being developed so early. Let's see. And also, I'm just going to say that I attended a very constructive meeting with Centerpoint Fire Department Chief Holt and Judge Kelly to discuss the county's flood response, both areas that went well and areas for improvement, which that's also important to focus on. And I know Chief Holt greatly appreciated that opportunity. And that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. In this, as November comes, you know, we're mindful for a couple of occasions. One is we are hosting a Marine Corps Birthday Ball. We sent out some invites for that. If you'd like to go, please contact me. Excited to have you there. Gravity check, 8 November at 6:00 PM for that event. We also, on 11 November, are going to be dedicating our building at 550 Earl Garrett to Colonel Ali Burton. And we have a special presentation for that and an agenda. I don't want to give too much away, but it's going to be a pretty neat day if you're able to see that public event on 11 November.
Local hero.
Yeah, he really is. You know, you can't, on 550 Earl Garrett, especially when a guy was born and raised there on that street, and has so much history here, and it's just exemplified everything we want and everything we teach in being good citizens. He's probably perhaps our greatest example. Two town halls attended recently. One small one on Cypress Creek, that was easy. One more challenging one in Comfort, where we demonstrated we're not only free thinkers, but free speakers. Pretty spicy. Appreciate that. And the invite from our fellow Commissioner, Chad Carpenter, out in Comfort. As you know, the line is somewhat blurred, and my fellow Commissioners give me a hard time about that, right, between Kerr and Kendall County. But, you know, true to form, very good showing out there in Comfort. And I'll continue to have a joint town hall with him as long as he continues to invite me. And we share both of our perspectives on what we're doing for our citizens, both in Kerr and Kendall. Yeah, fire ban exemptions came my way, too. A lot of calls about that, and I appreciate where folks are at. But please, you know, wait for a little more rain to come, and then we'll look at individual lifting and things like that and exemptions when we have that authority, which we don't right now. So, thank you.
Yeah, and looking at the 10-day forecast, there's not a drop of rain or, I don't think, a cloud in sight. So we're right back where we started. Saturday night, I attended a candidate's meet and greet or forum at the Buckhorn. It was very well-attended. A lot of candidates, of course. You know, you look up here, there's, conceivably, there could be four new faces up here after next March. Because mine won't be here for sure. The judge won't be here, but you'd be the holdover for sure. But it could conceivably change a lot. We had a lot of, there's a whole basket full of people running for Chip Roy's old spot, and we had six or seven of them show up out there. And, you know, some of them's stock rose, some of them's dropped. Right now, there's elections going on, I mean, voting going on for the amendments. The turnout so far has been low. Try to go out there and make your voice heard. People, early voting goes on, I mean, it goes on through the end of the week. This Friday, Divide Schools fundraiser out at the Divide VFD. I encourage you to attend. You know, our smallest school district in the state is right here in Kerr County, and they need all the help they can get. It's a wild game dinner, and it's well-attended always, and it's a fun event. It's a good family atmosphere, so it's a drive out there, but try to attend. I guess that's about all I got.
Good. Okay. Then with that, we'll proceed on to the consideration agenda. Item 1.1, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding an update on Lyons Park. Katie Graham, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. I think last time we met, since then, we've made quite a bit of progress on connecting with the community to get community input about what Lyons Park should become. In terms of updates, we have, we've met with the fire department, Centerpoint Volunteer Fire Department, about what their needs are for the park as well. And we're taking those into consideration for the final design phase. We have a proposal from landscape architect, from a geological engineer, a construction architect, to move forward with the final design concept. And if there is no design at this time, we are asking for any kind of approval. So we're here at the next step, looking for further support from the court for an MOU so that we can move forward with appropriate funding to get those designs in place and then bring them back to the court for final approval. And I think I've emailed those to you, Mr. Paces.
That's the next agenda item.
Okay. And that's where we are. That's where we are with it.
Good. Ready to move on to item two?
I guess so.
Don't move.
Okay, no, I can answer any questions if you'll have.
Move on to item 1.2, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to execute a non-binding memorandum of understanding in support of East Kerr Initiatives, EKI, enabling them to move forward with the design and planning phase of Lyons Park rebuild project in Centerpoint, Texas. This MOU will allow EKI to pursue grant funding and other financial support necessary to advance this phase of the project. Commissioner Paces.
Well, I'm going to start with making a motion that the court authorize the county judge to execute this non-binding memorandum of understanding, not necessarily as has been submitted, but with very minor modifications, because we have to name a liaison for it. But I make a motion that we go ahead and approve this and authorize the judge to sign it.
I will second your motion, sir.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second to approve the execution of the memorandum of understanding as presented. Any discussion?
Heather, have you?
Yes.
I have. I would read this, and you only need to insert the date that the court approved it there in Section 3. And then also, a second, a second order will be necessary, designated 28 under the contract.
And I assume we can go ahead and make a motion for that?
Yes, sir. I think that you can, because it's provided.
It's related to the MOU, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need to vote on this motion. I'll make another motion to appoint a...
Separate motion?
Yeah. Okay.
Since we're in discussion about this right now, what's your vision for the park? I know you've stated it a few times, but for those that are here.
Obviously, we want to build back better. And I hate to use that term, because there's some other connotations that go with it, but...
There's a lot of it being discussed in our riparian river group meetings. And so this is one of those topics that we go very detailed in. And Katie and Jeremy have done a great job of coming in with plans and proposals, knowing that they've got to come to the court, you know, for approval.
That's right.
But that's the reason they need to move to the next phase, so that they can go out and get what they need to get the money to pay somebody to come in and formally design and lay it all out.
And they're going to take this a lot further than, for example, what we're doing in Flat Rock Park, which is more just replacing what was lost and with a few other improvements. But, you know, I guess it's a function of how much money they can raise, because they've got some pretty aggressive plans to do an awful lot of stuff. And most of it is, you know, with a riparian intent to plant...
But we've got some very aggressive people on that board, too.
Yeah, I know. It's amazing how they've all come together and focused on this, and I appreciate that.
You know, from my perspective, I just, whatever we put in there has to be acceptable to the Maintenance Department, because the county will be maintaining the facility. And the last thing we want to do is put something that's, you know, spend a lot of money on things that the next flood's going to take out, because that is right down next to the river, and it flooded before, it'll flood again. So, you know, we'll be watching the design very closely. Okay. Thank you.
And that's all in consideration with the design team in place, to respect the dynamics of the river and the ecological function of that really wonderful space that's right on the river.
Right.
Yeah.
And all of those plans will come back to the court.
Right.
And the court will have the ability to...
Absolutely.
... anything before they move forward. This MOU just gives them the ability to show that the court supports the project, so they can...
Yeah, we don't want to hold them up.
Thank you.
And I did read in here that, you know, because I read these things pretty close, that everything does have to come back to us.
That's right. This is non-binding.
They need the ability to go out and get the funding.
But this is what gives them the ability to raise the money.
It does.
To do the park.
It does.
Right.
Yep.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Then those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we needed to appoint...
A liaison under Section B6. They need a liaison for the communication between EKI and the county.
And I'll make the motion, Commissioner Paces, since it happens to be in his precinct.
I second that motion.
It just happens.
Just happens, yeah, to be in his precinct.
Slightly involved.
The liaison, and I'm already working on the riparian group, so we won't be tapped, we'll be tapped out on some of it, but that'll be good. I'll have two of us working it.
So that's the motion?
That's the motion.
And a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Okay. Thank you. Move on to item 1.3, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to accept a donation of equipment and materials from Woodman Life to replace the playground equipment and add a lighted 25-foot flagpole with the American and Texas flags at Flat Rock Park. And I've got Commissioner Paces, Vanessa Dean, and Shalae Schilling.
And I'm not sure if any of...
You're here.
I don't think they're going to be.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Woodman Life is ready to go. They, you know, they've been working very closely with Shane and Michael Grinstud on what we want for the equipment, which is basically just replacing what we had, although, you know, the plan is to move it into a better location. And the value of that is roughly $50,000. They're going to purchase it, so we're going to accept an in-kind donation. And then the Maintenance Group will actually do the install. But their donation will include the concrete that's required, because, you know, you've got to anchor this stuff significantly in the ground. And there will be the little rubber chips underneath all the equipment to, you know, for safety for the kids if when they fall. So there's that. And then they also want to donate a 25-foot flagpole with the American and Texas flags on it. That will be a lighted flagpole. So I think between the two, it'll definitely get our park back on the map and, you know, back in good order. They want to move quickly and have that equipment basically installed by the first of the year, so...
So I've got a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Lighted flagpole, do we have power down there currently?
Solar.
Solar, okay.
Yeah. Because that way, we don't have to lower the flags at all. So that's pretty common.
Our meeting Tuesday with FEMA, so all this is cleared, right?
All this is cleared. They will ask for the order to be included in the backup for that project. It will be considered a donated resource, but it will still be within that project with...
And so Tracy, you're our donations coordinator. Everything's going? You're good, satisfied everywhere on it? Okay.
Not to be a flag expert, but dealing with flags every day, constantly up, will require replacement probably every six months or so. I'm just assuming that's going to be on the county's responsibility.
Yeah. And they were going to provide us some extra flags, but at some point, yeah, the county will be providing flags to, and will need to replace them, as we do with all of our flags that we fly.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just make everyone aware that we're still working with American Legion, who also want to, they are raising funds, and they want to donate some equipment there. So, you know, we lost parked tables and benches. That could be one area. Other suggestions are to put sun shades over the playground equipment to keep it from being so hot. I mean, there's a lot of things that they can do. Another suggestion was some of those permanently-installed barbecue grills in the park.
Have you had an opportunity to visit with Shane and the projects he's brought before FEMA?
Yes.
On some of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, all of that would basically be new improvements, so it won't be applicable to FEMA.
Okay.
I mean, maybe one or two of the parked benches and tables, and we'll make sure it's... I mean, maybe one or two of the park benches and tables, and we'll make sure it's plugged in. But for the most part, what American Legion, they've thrown out a number of roughly $50,000 of value. That will be just sheer improvements to the park. And obviously, I welcome anybody who wants to help improve our parks. So, let's see. With that, I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept the donation of equipment and materials from Woodman Life to replace the playground equipment and add a 25-foot flagpole with American and Texas flags at Flat Rock Park.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Item 1.4. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept donations to Kerr County Animal Control totaling $52 for the month of September. Mr. Givens.
Good morning. Just like the judge said, these are September monetary donations, and we appreciate it.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve this donation of $52.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the donation to the animal control facility as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Item 1.5. Consider discuss update on related matters to the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission. Commissioner Paces.
Okay, we had a board meeting last Tuesday in the Kendall County Commissioners' courtroom, and it was good that Comis-, sorry, Gillespie County Judge Daniel Jones and Commissioner Keith Kramer attended, though not in official capacity, because we're still waiting on the Kendall Commissioners' Court to approve the bylaws and enter local agreement. But I'm told that that's on their agenda tomorrow, and they needed to see the signed agreements from ourselves and Gillespie, for whatever reason. So, hopefully, that will be formalized very soon. Let's see. And of course, the video from our board meeting is already posted on our website at hcesrpc.com. And then, last Thursday, I went to Austin to attend Public Utilities Commission's board meeting, and I spoke during their public input session. Due to the three-minute limit, it was very nice to have Susan Bell and Barbara Ferguson attend with me, so they were able to complete our script, if you will. And then, we also, I gave a copy of a formal letter from the Subregional Planning Commission to the Commissioners of Public Utilities Commission. And all that is also available on our website. A link to their video is available, so instructions on how to get to the right place to see all that, and I think it went very well. There was some interaction with the chairman. And then, we had a fourth person, David Nash, out of Gillespie County, who has been an outspoken advocate against BES, also gave his input to the board. So, we'll see if it does any good. I'm hoping that the ball's in their court. Maybe somebody from Public Utilities Commission will reach out and say, "All right, we're ready to meet with you." Anyway, we'll keep the pressure up, and we plan to do something similar with LCPA, because they also have refused to meet with us in a formal coordination planning meeting about BES. Also, we obtained the ERCOT standard interconnection agreement between Black Mountain Energy Storage Two LLC and LCPA. And LCPA stated in their letter to PUCT that the filed agreement contains slight deviations from the standard PUCT approved generation interconnection agreement. So, we have that under close review to see what that really means. But what really concerns me about all of these interconnection agreements is that there is no mention of any efforts with respect to cybersecurity and requirements under chapter 117 of the Commerce Code and/or the Governor's GA 48 or GA 49, which is, you know, strictly prohibits companies that are based in or have subsidiaries or any way related to China, Iran, North Korea, and there's one more. But anyway, we're just not seeing it. And that's a huge concern. Why are we connecting things to the grid that could easily have China components with, you know, cattle batteries or other circuit boards made in China? You know, we've already seen Volt Typhoon take over the grid in San Antonio for four hours. So, you know, it's time Texas wakes up on this issue. And that's all I have, but happy to take any questions.
No action?
No action.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then we have a timed item at 9:30, and we're actually almost on time for that.
Whatever happens.
It's item 1.6, which is to consider discuss to take appropriate action regarding Texas A&amp;M Research Study Flood Impacts in Kerr County presentation. Mr. John Payne.
Great. Judge, Commissioners, thank you so much. Slight change of the susceptible. My name is Dr. Garrett Sansom, and I was gonna be speaking, although this is Mr. J.D. Payne, if that works for you.
Okay.
Okay, great. Well, as mentioned, we're from Texas A&amp;M University, and I'm here through the Texas A&amp;M Superfund Research Center. I'm also the director of Together for a Better Tomorrow Research Program. Mr. Payne handing out just a summary as well as my card, just so you have it. So, what I wanted to do today is briefly discuss a planned research project in Kerr County involving the recent flooding. Clearly, I don't need to go into the details of that, but the idea of this particular research is one that has been explored in other areas of Texas. This isn't our first time doing that. That includes the Hayes County Memorial Day flash flood event, the ITC petrochemical fires in Houston, Hurricane Harvey, as well as East Palestine train derailment. And just as a note, both myself and Mr. Payne are Hill Country born and bred and currently live, so we're Hill Country boys. So, the purpose of this particular survey...
What county?
We're from Hayes.
Hayes.
Yeah, we're both Wimberly kids, although we do love Kerr. So, the purpose of this particular questionnaire is, first and foremost, to not be a burden on any of the participants who choose to do this. It's supposed to be a quick and easy thing. But the idea is to explore items of their experiences following the flood. For instance, if they got warnings, if they obeyed them, why they did or didn't, as well as opportunities to understand about how they relate with both their neighbors, as well as folks like yourself and other organizations, to understand just the underlying cohesion of the community, which I expect will be high in certain locations, as well as their experience with the recovery thus far. The whole point of it is not to point any fingers at all. I think there's been plenty of that. It's more so to see if there's any highlight opportunities for positive change, both at the local level, but especially at the level of the Hill Country itself. As mentioned earlier today, it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when these sort of flash flood events happen again. And I pray that Kerr County never experiences something like this. However, it will happen somewhere along the flash flood valley of which we live in. So, if it's not here, it could be Wimberly again, it could be somewhere else again, it could blank out. And so, I was hoping of the chance just to tell you that we're coming out here. We're gonna be talking with some folks. We're working with other organizations and local organizations, other folks in the area before we go out and collect this information. But we will be approaching residents to get this information. It's about a 15- to 20-minute survey itself, and there's gonna be a subset, perhaps 50, that we'll be following up if they want to be a part of it for about another six months, so monthly, once-a-month phone calls for about six months. The information that we get will be provided to folks like yourself first and report if you're interested, before any kind of publications are sought, just so local folks get the local information before anybody else. So, I was hoping to field any questions they might have, let you know that we're coming out. The last thing I wanna do is fly under the radar, so I was just hoping to let you guys know that we're here. And obviously, when we go out into the county, you know, to be able to tell them that we did have this conversation, we did provide you the information. And clearly, you can follow up with me anytime you want through phone calls, Zoom call, or when next I'm in the town, I'm happy to sit down with you. But that's all I got. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to field them.
So, there's no ask from the court? We don't?
Not yet.
No ask. The only ask is the thumbs up from you to say that we had this conversation and provided you the information. It's mostly just a, doing my due diligence, and I wanted to make sure that you heard about it.
Very good.
I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
What's the study strategy and what's the deliverable product?
Yeah, great question. So, originally, this type of hazard response is done under what's called a CASPER. That was developed by the CDC. The problem with that is, the way you work is, you break up a county into 30 random zones and then seven random homes. However, a lot of folks don't have homes to be a part of. So, if we did that exact strategy, we'd be missing the most impacted people who lost it, because I think it was about a 30-mile stretch of the river. So, instead, we're gonna do, we will be approaching some homes randomly, as long as, A, there's no, you know, don't knock my door signs, no signs of territoriality, abandoned homes, things like that. As long as it seems like it's fine, we will be knocking on the door and collecting the survey in person. However, we will be providing QR codes and digital codes to some of our local partners for anybody who wants to be a part of this. And it has to go through what's called Institutional Review Board, so the Ethics Board has to make sure this is okay. We haven't done the yet because we're having these conversations first to see if maybe you wanted to ask a question. So, for instance, in Wimberly, one of the questions our community partners wanted was, they're just curious the percentage of people had generators. So, we included that to be able to say, you know, about 4% of the folks in Hayes County have a generator. So, if those types of questions come up, I wanna be able to include them in the survey before getting ethical review, just to make sure that we can do, you know, give the data that the folks actually want. Yeah. And the deliverable. So, with folks like yourself, we'll write a report that summarizes the main findings. We are obligated to protect the identities, nor will I even be keeping the individual identities of people. However, in the aggregate, I'll be able to say things like, you know, X percentage of them received warnings, this percentage didn't respond, and here's the response for why they didn't respond. You know, in the past, and I'm not predicting this will be the case, but in the past, people tend to trust local voices more than they do from like the national voices or national media kind of thing. And so, we'll be exploring if that's true in this area, and hopefully, the lessons that we learn from this could be applicable here. But like I said, if not here, certainly in the Hill Country, somewhere else. So, for instance, in Houston, they changed the way they did their shelter and place commands based on the research we did, just because there was confusion over where they get their information was. And now, they have a pretty robust, in Deer Park, Texas, technically next to Houston, they have a pretty robust, they call them Wally the Turtle, Wally the Shelter and Place Turtle, on how to do it properly. So, they teach kids in schools and things on how to do that. And in part, that was informed by this.
So, is this kind of like a public after-action report?
It could inform that, yeah. It is a research-based approach. We certainly work with a lot of different hazard groups and county level to be able to provide this sort of information, if it's meaningful and if they're even interested. A lot of folks do wanna know the results and get that report, just to be able to look over it, and some folks don't, and that's fine. But again, this is just more about their folks' experiences, opportunities for improvement if they exist, and sort of what we can do to better be prepared and more resilient towards the next.
But with you reaching out to the folks that were the most affected, do you think they've had enough time yet to process?
Really good question. The answer honestly is, I don't know. We're not starting tomorrow. And one of the reasons that we waited even this long to have this initial conversation is the last thing I wanna do is interrupt any kind of recovery action. And it sounds like there's still obviously ongoing things, and it's gonna be probably another year or two before you're, I mean, we experienced that in Wimberly. But no, I don't know yet, but we're probably gonna be coming out at the absolute earliest, I would say maybe starting in December, but really, we're talking, we're gonna be out here in the spring. Some of the groups that we're working with have actually been providing homes with the money that they've been getting. There are somebody we wanna talk to, like, are people ready to have a brief conversation about this or not? One thing we will do is provide resources, everything from like, resource information, where they can contact folks, everything from mental health issues to potential, you know, financial assistance. But those are the type of things, we're hoping some of the other county and local organizations will be like, "Oh, please, put our name down," that, yeah, they can go to this website. And then, we can hand that out in addition to trying to collect the 15- to 20-minute survey.
So, are you planning to primarily interview residents and businesses that were affected? Or, I mean, are you gonna encompass and include county personnel? Are you gonna include UGRA? You know, a lot of other people were involved and have unique perspectives on the flood and the response. And, you know, my hope, if you're gonna do this, is that you at least focus heavily on ensuring that the Governor's promise to fund the flood warning system is upheld, because we are putting together a very comprehensive warning system that will greatly improve the way we handle emergencies in the future. And I just wanna make sure we get funding for the darn thing.
Yeah.
That's failed in the past.
Yeah, I can't speak to what will 100% say at the end of this report. And to be clear, we're not advocates. The only thing I advocate for is honesty in the scholarship. But I will say, yeah, we're planning on having all those conversations. We're also planning on not just interviewing residents who, you know, lost a home or flooded, but those who did, just the experiences in the county as a whole. The CASPER method has been shown to give a good, generalizable data, even with a relative, you know, even just a couple hundred folks. And so, we'll see how that pans out. I mean, if I put on my hat outside of this, I do have some opinions about probably what will or will not happen based on this, as well as what the recommendations might be. But I wanna hold off on any of that until at least we get the data back.
I appreciate you coming forward. I mean, Texas A&amp;M has a trusted name. You're a real brand that people trust, and I appreciate that. You'll certainly get good stories from home residents, but, you know, the 119 names that are, you know, in our minds and in our hearts, many of those are visitors. And it's always challenging to trace back, you know, the impact on visitors that were horribly affected with losing somebody, or just, they lost their RV and had to drive home without it. You know, there's plenty of stories like that from people that stayed in Airbnbs. So, I've heard about home residents kind of as your target, but not necessarily visitors. But you did mention businesses, so where it becomes tricky is, you know, contacting families of those lost and businesses impacted, meaning campsites or camps, and especially those that are under lawsuit.
Yeah.
Are you staying away from that?
At this point, I don't have any plans on speaking with them.
Thank you.
Well, be sure to ask some of the camps and RV park owners what they think about the recent legislation that's gonna greatly affect their industry.
Yeah.
Be sure to ask.
Noted.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. It was a precious opportunity.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item 1.7. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve an additional SOD investigator within Operation Lone Star FY26, grant number 4587303. The grade step would be implemented at a grade 25. 100% of salary and benefits are paid through the Operation Lone Star grant funding. Say what?
Passing material for you, sir, for 1.9.
Okay, 1.9.
This is Captain Grant Gage?
Grant?
New name.
Morning.
Grant.
I got it. The new name is Captain.
That's true.
Captain Gage.
Morning. Like I said, I'd like to create under Operation Lone Star additional position. Wouldn't actually go into effect until February of '26. We've identified a person for that, but they're currently still in their current employment. And they work for the federal government, so they're kinda, they're kinda shut down on some things right now, so. But 100% of it's gonna be paid through Operation Lone Star, so starting grade would be at 25, which is equivalent to investigator or sergeant pay, which is equivalent to everybody else in that, within the Special Operations Division. Also, as in for funding for Operation Lone Star, we went to a meeting last week, Wednesday or Thursday, down for the Operation Lone Star Task Force was in Goliad. Governor was in attendance to that. Governor's remarks there is, funding for Operation Lone Star's not going away anytime soon, so, you know, they figure at least, at least another decade or so, depending on what, how the administration, if the administration changes, governor's still obligated for Texas to control its borders and control the people entering in the United States.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second. To approve the, adding the new SOD investigator position with the Lone Star, Operation Lone Star grant as presented. Any discussion?
So this is, this position's fully 100% funded by Operation Lone Star?
Yes.
So, so just talk to me, how long do you expect Operation Lone Star to continue?
That's what I said. The governor just said, at least another decade.
At least another decade. Because at some point, the money goes away, I, I don't know what that does to the position. I guess it's 10 years down the road.
Yeah.
Deal with it, but.
You know, and, you know, plan would be is, hey, if the money went away, then any of the, any of the acquired deputy position, we would, any openings, they would just move to that deputy position.
Yep. All right. I assume you have a candidate in mind already?
Yes.
Personal employee.
So, but he's, he's kind of at hold.
Got it.
Until February, so.
Okay. Anything else? We have a motion and a second. For the new position for Operation Lone Star as presented. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.8. Consider discuss if they can appropriate action to approve a salary grade adjustment with Operation Lone Star grant FY26 grant number 4587303. The grade and step would move from 21.5 to 13, to 25.13. And the position description would change from OLS, SOD deputy to an SOD investigator. 100% of the salary and benefits are paid through Operation Lone Star funding.
Same thing. Uh, this would just be for that grade and step change for the current deputy that's working in, in that position, to move him equivalent to his, his peers.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve the step and grade increase as presented. Any discussion?
Just tell me why.
His duties under Operation Lone Star actually move more towards that investigative than what they do, because they gather a lot of data, analyst type of stuff. They use licensed plate readers. They track back a lot of that movement through there. So it's more of an investigative role. When we started and we first created with that deputy, of being out there, out there on the road doing interdiction, get a little bit of experience. Now he's had, he's had a year, well, two years of that experience, so moving him more into that investigative role. And as we see with Operation Lone Star, more of, from border securing to more of interior operations, that having that investigator's a little, a little bit better.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Operation Lone Star, it's been phenomenal for, for more than just us. You know, I visited with the sheriff here the other day, and there's other counties that are having to build their whole sheriff department based off of the funding through there, which is why we feel so secure about the fact that it'll be here for long term. And, and so, you know, if we're looking at at least another 10 years, then, then I think we're in pretty good shape there with this all being 100% funded through that.
Without doubt. Maybe we can get computers in all the cars by then.
Maybe.
Hey, that's something, that's something Operation, we, we, I have a meeting Friday and some other stuff, we should, we're, we're getting the ball rolling.
Any other discussion? Then those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.9. Consider discuss if they can appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign an amendment to the master equity lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for the lease purchase of a 2025 Chevy Suburban and a 2025 Dodge Durango. Also authorize county judge to sign the lease agreement for a 2025 Ford Expedition through Enterprise Fleet Management. Captain Gage.
All right. So I passed out that master, that amendment, the master equity agreement that's there. So that's the, that's kind of the document that's in question. So on two of these vehicles, on the Durango and the Suburban, we did a capitalization reduction. Basically what it is, is we pay completely that whole amount all the way down to a dollar, which keeps it on the lease. So with Enterprise, they have some stipulations where that vehicle, under, under purchase, conditional purchase, that vehicle has to remain under the, under the program for a year before it's actually transferred over. So this document, what Enterprise explained to me is, this document comes up when we do that type of that capitalized reduction down to the dollar. And it's basically a conditional purchase of it. And that's just mainly for tax purposes, because Enterprise doesn't just do it for, for government, they do it for private business as well. So once that conditional change goes in there, it has to do with, with tax purposes of how they can claim that vehicle, whether those payments on taxes, or it has to go to depreciation type of value on their taxes. So that's just kind of the form in question from it. We've never done this before, and this form kind of auto generates from it. So there were just some kind of questions about it, of how we kind of go with the process with it, of whether, of whether the court votes on it, or if we just continue as business as usual, through how we operate normally through the, through the, through the lease.
I'll get it started with a motion to authorize county judge to sign the amendments to the master equity lease agreement as proposed. With Enterprise Fleet Management. You've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So is this something that, that we're going to have to constantly be having to bring before us?
That, that was kind of the question, sir, was, you know, do we continue to just carry it as normal business of how, of how we normal purchase things through it? You know, the normal purchase process is, hey, we get a quote for it, the quote is initialized, it goes back to the, to Enterprise, Enterprise, you know, because they do, Enterprise Fleet Management, they only get vehicles two ways. One is they order directly from the factory where the incentive's coming, or they scour the state for in-stock. Enterprise doesn't have like a normal car dealership where they keep vehicles in stock. So through their nationwide network, they check car dealerships, so if we're looking for a specific vehicle, they check all those networks, and then they come back and they say, hey, here's the price. So with Enterprise, them ordering directly from the factory, we get all those incentives from the government, and, and that's, and that's kind of how, how it works from it. So as for normal purchasing of how, of how we do this with the, with it is, is we get the, we get the quote, we look at it through our budget and say, hey, this fits within our budget, all right? And there, it's initialed, and then it goes forward. They do, they either locate the vehicle, or they already found the vehicle, or they make that order from it. Some of these vehicles don't land for several months during, especially when they have to be built from it. So we get, we get money in kind of salary savings for some of the lease payments. So as long as we're looking within the budget, it's, it's normal confines of what we do in the, in the sheriff's office under our budget.
But because it's an amendment to the lease agreement, the only person with authority to sign those is the county judge, so it may take a few more agenda items as it comes up.
Yeah.
But the county judge is the only one with authority to sign the amendment to the lease agreement.
You know, like I said, this, this was the first time we did it, so it's kind of new. So I mean, we're kind of looking at the court or, or the county attorney to how we proceed with this.
I reckon we may bring him forward to the court for approval and the county judge to sign, because if something comes up down the road and the question, the authority of, of the contract or try, well, if there's ever a disagreement, the only person who can find it.
Yeah, it won't, it won't slow, it won't slow down the process anyway.
No, I don't think it will slow down the process. I think it's just going to be some more kind of in-house paperwork and have that order, and it'll protect the sheriff's office and the county.
Yeah, because that was going to be my question, is how are we going to track everything that's going on behind closed doors on this, if it doesn't?
Another hoop to jump through.
Yeah, so.
I agree. It, it is just a hoop to jump through.
Yeah.
But I'd hate to not have the proper signature on it.
But you've looked at all of this?
Yes.
Okay.
And you're moving away from Chevy Tahos, I assume, for availability of rebate vehicles? But you're still trying for large SUVs?
Yeah, so, Suburban is kind of, we, we've just kind of found, we've kind of need a pool type of vehicle, so we have, you know, we sent multiple people to schools during the flood, you know, we had a lot of personnel that we had to move around with, and we're taking five, six, seven vehicles to move those personnel around, so we kind of designated with that. The Durango is actually going to be purchased through SCAP money, which is jail money, is going to be utilized in jail operations, so that's well within the thing. And I had to look up what SCAP stands for, so it's State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, so that's money we get from the, from the state to house part of the illegal alien assistance program.
You didn't have some more baling wire where you could hold that other one together?
Yeah. So, that's kind of how, you know, the, the Durangos are kind of becoming, becoming a little bit more available. We're actually looking at one of those for, through Operation Lone Star, for one of the vehicles.
For patrol.
Yeah, the, the Tahos, that, man, they're, they're hit or miss. If you don't get in during that, that production period and get them ordered, man, good luck, good luck getting them. Now, they're good on the resale side, because there's always agencies that are looking for them, so we usually make out pretty well on the, on the resale side of them.
Thank you.
So in general, I mean, the market's getting better on these types of vehicles? You know, they're, they're for a while, a year out.
Yeah, availability, and with, you know, and I think GM has kind of opened up several ordering windows, depending on the type of vehicle, but, but usually, you know, with GM, when we start looking at Tahos, it's always right before, right before budgeting. So, you know, we're going through there, and we're trying to figure out what we, what we can, what we can get, or we come to the court for, and what you guys will approve in the, in the budget as well, so.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Judge, can we take a break before we get to Larry's three items?
Sure. We'll take, let's take a five-minute break.
Judge, the Chief Walons on the way here needs to talk to you real quick out here, request by DPS.
Okay.
Well, then, it's your break.
Order. Next item on the agenda is item 1.10, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve the interlocal agreement between Kirk County and Valverde County for jail services for the county sheriff and county judge to sign the same. Sheriff Leith.
This is just another jail contract, asking y'all's approval to be able to do business with Valverde County area at the new rate.
Wow.
I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion in a second to approve the new contract with Valverde for jail services. Any discussion?
No.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.11, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve a three-year service agreement beginning October 27, 2025 between the Kirk County Sheriff's Office and Commissary Express, Inc., to provide comprehensive commissary services for the inmates at the Kirk County Correctional Facilities. Sheriff.
Yeah, I'm looking for y'all's approval for the judge to be able to sign the new contract with Commissary Express. Commissary Express, they're our vendor for the inmates, from personal hygiene to food items, drinks, stuff like that. We do get 31% according to this contract. We've had it since 2009 for 16 years, and this is one of the few things the Sheriff Herhoes are asking me to keep, and they have done a great amazing job. I did advertise for this two weeks in the paper. This is something that I have to take bids out every five years, so I'm just looking for y'all's approval to keep them as a vendor.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve a three-year service agreement with Commissary Express, Inc., as presented. Any discussion?
Sheriff, were there any other bids you said you advertised?
Yeah, I don't know. They were only on the bid. Sometimes it looks like we've had them for long, maybe they think. No, and they're just really good. They're going to do.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.12, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to execute a contract with Alara Creative.
Yeah, as I talked to you about this, this thing about J3 is pretty similar to that. This is a contract our county attorney prepared with the assistance of T-DAM. So I'm kind of looking for y'all's approval. The county attorney did write it, she did approve it, and just looking for y'all's approval for the judge to be able to sign this.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve for this, what, kind of a ratification contract with Alara?
Yes, sir.
It is, and it's so that we can get reimbursement from FEMA for the services that Alara Creative provided after the disaster.
And what were those services, Sheriff?
Information officer, he was one of the ones at the table to work with ours at the county and with T-DAM and DPS.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
He ran the jick.
I remember that guy, yeah. He ran the jick.
Actually, we both got contacted by the FBI just last week. He did such an amazing job. I want to talk to him and see how he handled that situation. He did a really good job.
Got a motion and a second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 1.13, consider to discuss to take appropriate action for the court to authorize advertising and issuing a request for proposal for the 2025 Disaster Recovery Kirk County Wide Road Rehabilitation Project Number 960820. This is 25-002602, July severe weather number 4879DR, metal beam guard fence replacement for Herman Sun's Bridge, Lane Valley Bridge, and Indian Creek Bridge. Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. Plans and specs have been prepared by the Office of the County Engineer for replacement of damaged metal beam guard fence, also known as guard rail at various bridge locations across the Guadalupe River. That would be Herman Sun's Road, Lane Valley Road, and Indian Creek Road. And this is due to damage caused by the severe weather flooding on July 4th, 2025. The bridges have been inspected by TEAC Task Force One, Cape Dawson Engineering, TechDOD, the Office of the County Engineer and FEMA, in an effort to determine the limits of damage and repair. The contract documents have been reviewed by both T-DAM and FEMA. The same contract documents we're using for Cadeley Bridge, so that same spec is being used. It's been looked at ad nauseam. The advertisement for bid is attached, and the schedule is as follows. November 5, 2025, and November 12, 2025 will be advertising. Mandatory pre-bid conference would be 2:00 PM November 17. Bid would be due at 2:00 PM December 5th, that's a Friday. They would not be opened until 10:00 AM on December 8, and if everything is in good order, we could award it that same day. Otherwise, we'd bring it to the next commissioner's court. Just depends on how things pan out. County engineer requests the court authorize advertising and issuing a request for proposals for the 2025 Disaster Recovery Kirk County Wide Road Rehabilitation Project Number 960820. It's the 25-02602 July severe weather number 4879DR. DR stands for disaster recovery. It's the metal beam guard fence replacement for Herman Sun's Bridge, Lane Valley Bridge, and Indian Creek Bridge.
I move for approval.
Second.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve the requests for the disaster recovery projects as presented. Just put them in plural.
Very good. Just a quick discussion on that. You know, Roy Perkins lives right by one of those bridges on Lane Valley, and his 200-year-old pecan tree that so many generations have proposed under was lost. You know, you can't ever really replace that history. And then they came and took the pecan tree away, which they had to, as part of the debris removal and cut it up, so he didn't get a chance to really, you know, make any plaques for all the generations of his families and all the families that live along there that proposed under this one tree. It was really sad, you know. I could, I could feel the sadness in his soul when he talked about this, but he was also sad about the fencing, you know, that buttsaw, and that's what you're talking about replacing. And I appreciate you being very involved in this, and if anyone ever finds a pecan tree that we can plant there and have it grow for another 200 years, he's looking for one. Thank you.
Charlie, are these guard rails pretty much standard, all three bridges, same basic design?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sounds good. Any other discussion? Having lost a heritage oak, I can tell you, anyone that's ever lost one, it hurts the soul.
It does.
It hurts the soul, losing a tree like that.
Very sad.
With that, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Next item is 1.14, consider to discuss to take appropriate action for the commissioner's court to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the second amendment to the contract with JCW for guard rail repairs to Arrowhead Road in Precinct 4 due to damage from the July 4th flood. Ms. Hoffer.
Yeah, this is the contract that I tried to approve two weeks ago, and it wasn't ready and wasn't fully reviewed, so we're back here today.
But it is now.
It is now. I'm glad that we did it and maybe change it about, and we need to include it in the petition at the beginning.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the second amendment to the contract for the guard rails on Arrowhead Road as presented previously and again today. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.15, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve the general contract for the rental of 171 water barriers on Indian Creek Bridge, Precinct 4, in lieu of guard rail that was damaged during the July 4th flood until the guard rails can be replaced. Ms. Hoffer.
Yes, this is the same thing. Needed the right verbiage in it, so we're bringing the contract to get it approved.
And we'll make sure there's water in the water barriers.
Yes, there is. Well, one of the caps. It's pretty nasty.
Got a motion and a second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 1.16, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve contracts with CASA, Dedirt Center, Hill Country Crisis Council, Ingram Volunteer Fire Department, Turtle Creek Fire Department, Ingram Volunteer Fire Department, and Tierra Linda Volunteer Fire Department. And these are just routine contract amendments. I move for approval.
I'll second.
Then those in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.17, is consider to discuss to take appropriate action to surplus IT items for the IT department. Michelle.
Yes, you have the list in front of you of the items that IT is requesting that we surplus.
I'll move for approval as submitted.
Got a motion and a second to approve the list as submitted. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 2.1, budget amendments?
There are not any.
Item 2.2, pay the bills?
Yes, there are several of those. Today's total, $1,940,134.31.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the paying the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to late bills?
There are not any.
Auditors' reports?
There are not any.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to monthly reports.
Yes, for September 2025, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, Justice of the Peace, Judge Bill Ragsdale, Precinct 4, Revise Environmental Health and Animal Services, Director Reagan Gibbons, Environmental Health, OSFF, Director Ashley Batters, Treasurer's Office, Treasurer Tracy Salden.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 2.6, court orders. I have reviewed Court Orders Number 41564 through 41605. They all appear to be in order, and I will make a motion that they be approved as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Information agenda. Anything from department heads? IT.
Good morning, Court. Since the dust has kind of settled, I know we're still kind of looking through the fog yet from the floods, but it's been several months since I have given a quarterly report. So that's what I'm talking about here today. My report dates back from May 12. Since then, we've obviously had a number of different projects and initiatives that we've been working on. I'll kind of run through them in a chronological order. Back in May, we went live with our endpoint detection response antivirus program. So all, all endpoint devices throughout the county now have very directed and automated response to any type of antivirus or malware events. This allows us to block those specific devices at the point of attack, so that way any viruses that do affect individual components are locked down to those specific devices. Back in May, also, we identified that the Laserfish program that the county uses for county records had been expired and was no longer under support. So we brought that back online and have that updated to the most recent software version. In May, we also moved from our on-premise Odyssey courts system into the cloud environment with Tyler Tech. That was a multi-staged approach where we had to move the data from our on-premise servers into the cloud environment, still under the Odyssey platform. Once we did that, then we migrated to the current version of Navgator. Now, I know there's been some consternation as to the speed and responsiveness of that program. However, that is a risk that we take when we move to a cloud environment. The vendors themselves are the ones that host the documents now and all the data. We do help a little bit with the on-premises stuff, like if they're having printer problems, but the speed at which documents are downloaded, that stuff needs to be documented and submitted directly through Tyler Tech. We can help a little bit on that, but ultimately, it ends up being a ticketing process through Tyler Technologies. When I had a meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, with our customer support team, they were not aware of it. So it's the end users, the people that actually use the product, that need to submit the tickets. It's not my staff that does that. Now, for awareness, like I said, we are around to help kind of do an initial investigation of it, but if it's a download product, problem from a third-party vendor, Tyler Technologies, and there's a number of vendors that the county uses, that's kind of outside my control. So you have to submit the tickets with those vendors.
Should you be copied on that?
If the ticketing system allows, I would just a courtesy email to our help team would suffice.
Yeah, because I would think that at some point, they need to lean on you because you're IT.
Oh, they have.
Right. I know. Yeah.
He's trying to get off.
It's not completely outside my lane, but I mean, if it's a product with their systems, that's.
No, yeah, I realize who has to fix it. I just don't want IT left out of the loop, is my concern.
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't think they can escape.
No, we won't. So after that, in June, we went to our new active directory. That actually did clean up a lot of our processes. Some lessons learned out of that was how we managed passwords for users. That got to be quite clumsy in the transition, but we were able to overcome that. So for the first two weeks after that, we were, we were running. Also, during the conversion, the process with INCODE permissions didn't necessarily transfer over as advertised, so that created a bunch of work for not only my team, but also the treasurer and the auditors, and they were great with helping get that moved over. Early August, we obviously moved over to Office 365 environment. Kind of the lessons learned out of that one was we did not have full awareness of the workflow processes for each of the different staffs. So, you know, hey, I need this email address. We need this, this, or this. That information would have been useful beforehand during the discovery phase to smooth out that process, but we are still, in fact, we're actually, my team is still learning the backend pieces of Office 365. So for every endpoint, end-user facing page, there's an administrative page on the backside that we have to learn as well. My, I've got one computer monitor that's got eight different administrative pages just for Office 365. So steep learning curve on there, but, but we're finally starting to get that normalized. And then also, actually, since the 18th of July, we have replaced, actually, I'll back up even to May, over 70 computer monitors, but since July, over 100 desktop computers and laptops. And each one of these devices can take anywhere between four and eight hours per device. So there's been, it's finally starting to kind of, we're catching up there a little bit, but there were many days here recently where we would feel more phone calls saying that their, their computer wouldn't start than we could actually replace. I had a list of, we had, at one point, we had 12 computers sitting on the shelf, ready to deploy, but not have the manpower to deploy. As you guys are aware, Matt Comer is no longer with the county. He had two months of vacation on the books, so that left me short one individual. I had, I sent another individual to a training program, so that left me down to, down to two people in the office. And then I had another individual that was dealing with some, some health issues. So it was myself and one other person that were on the help desk, replaced computers, and any other troublesome, trouble maintenance in our office. So I know there's been a lot of questions from my, my office or for my office on how come we're not getting these things out as fast, you know, faster?
And it wasn't like you set up a large EOC and the president came with all this computer stuff right in the middle of all this in July.
We also supported all the flood relief from the IT standpoint. Yes, we did provide the, a direct feed for all of the president moments, Governor Abbott, when he would come into town. So we were, my list doesn't even cover any of the flood stuff, so we were able to manage that in a pretty reasonable fashion. Had three guys at the EOC pretty much all day, every day. Luckily, during that time period here within the courthouse, there wasn't a lot of troublesome IT stuff going on, so the two guys that I did actually have in the, in the courthouse on a reg, on a regular basis, were able to maintain. So we, we really got kind of lucky during that period. It could have been a lot worse, especially coming straight out of that active directory migration. We were spinning our wheels already. Luckily, that piece had normalized before the floods hit, so we could actually concentrate on the EOC and then the smaller activities there within the courthouse. So I have onboarded a new, new guy, brought him in here last meeting. He has been great. He's hit the ground running, and I'm very blessed to have him on my staff. I'm just hoping I can keep my staff together for a while longer. I did bring in on, an intern in May, and she's been great. She got bombarded with our active directory migration, which no kid coming out of college will ever see. So she had a crash course in a lot of IT stuff. But she's also been just great in building the new computers. So what we do, a little bit on the process, we have to take every new computer that we have, scrub it down to just bare bones, Microsoft Windows environment, and then reload them individually depending on the, the end user. So like, that's why the process can be quite lengthy. Somebody like Charlie Hastings, it took us actually almost six weeks to get his computer replaced. Just so much data, just weird programs that, now, that would, that's an extreme, but even a best-case scenario, it's four hours minimum. So doing all that. Some stuff that we've got coming up here in the next six, eight months, full system, multi-factor authentication. And basically what that means is when you sit down to your computer, you're either going to plug in a USB device or some other physical token and type in a unique PIN. We're trying to get away from just the password stuff. A lot of that is driven by C-DIST requirements, but it's also one of the best security measures for the, the end users as far as network security goes. So I'm working with our vendor on that, trying to really zero in on what that looks like. I got a quote from them this morning, and I'm waiting for one other, one other thing to look at here, hopefully in the coming weeks. AD Systems for the two district courtrooms and then the county clerk, county court, county court at law. law, we're looking to modernize that equipment as well. The video stuff, that solution is actually pretty seamless. It's actually what does the audio piece look like, you know, the lapel mics, the sound mixers, the amplifiers, and that kind of stuff. So we're working on that, as well as trying to migrate to a paperless courts for the three courts that were mentioned. Looking at Gillespie County as an example, because they have actually already been using that platform for roughly 18 months. We need to get with, the respective courts need to get with their counterparts in Gillespie to figure out what their task flows look like within enterprise justice, Navigator, and then we can manipulate that to how we do our processes here. So that's another add-on ticket with Tyler, but we're in the discovery phase of that as well for our courtrooms here. And then September, we kicked off our annual cyber, our cybersecurity program training. This year, it comes with an additional artificial intelligence training module as well, so there's two state-required cybersecurity training events to complete. And as of this morning, we're actually at 44% completion for the county, so great progress, but we still have a ways to go. And then starting next month, we are going to resume our active phishing training emails and stuff coming forward, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, we put a pause on that back in June, just as busy as everything was, but it's time to get rolling back on that again. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
So that was the only thing we didn't do during the disaster.
That's one program that I filed.
You know, a couple of guys weren't able to be where we were at, because Don and I and then the judge were down at the EOC most of this time, the last several months.
Thank you, by the way.
And, yeah, we appreciate that, but, but we drug Cory around like a dog on a leash and never say thank you hardly, so I want to tell you thank you. Him and his whole crew, it didn't matter what the need was, we called him and said, hey, we need this, and we didn't ask what it was going to take to get it. They just went to work.
All hands on deck.
And, and the same thing is said for, for our county attorney, our auditor, our treasurer. All these folks were, I mean, everybody just jumped in and did the job.
Everybody had a role.
But, but we very rarely get to acknowledge them, and so someone getting up, giving a report, oh, yeah, the sheriff was out there some.
Was he? Come on.
I saw him out there once, I think, but, but.
Cory was very helpful. When you were using, we were using.
Right, yeah. And so it was a very demanding time, and the fact that y'all were able to still keep everything maintained the way that you did is outstanding. So thank y'all very much for what you did.
I've got a great team. I'm very blessed.
Yeah.
Anything else for Cory? Thank you.
Report.
That was from department heads. Any other department head reports? Let's move on to 3.2, which would be elected officials. I didn't see anybody stir on that one. Okay. Then 3.3, liaison commissioners.
Yeah, I have something for maintenance. Last Tuesday, well, we've had a chronic problem. We knew we were getting, going to have a problem with the Westcar Annex as far as the roof leaking and stuff. You know, I have a history with Ingram ISD, and they had a history of the roof leaking and what have you. Their maintenance would patch it, and then, and it'd last for six months or whatever, and then we started doing the same thing with our maintenance, and finally, I met out there with, with Shane and Bob Reeves, and we said, that's enough, let's get Cypress Roofing in here and get it fixed right. And so hopefully, that's going to take. And around each of those chimneys is where it was leaking, and we just haven't been able to fix it on our own, so we got the professionals in, and hopefully, that'll fix that stuff.
And with full disclosure to the public, this was all disclosed.
Sure.
We, we knew we had problems with that roof. That was part of the swap that we did with Ingram ISD. We did that with our eyes wide open. We knew it was going to be a matter of time before we had to replace the roof, so here we are.
But it's not a roof replacement.
No, it's not. Patching, patching in.
The main roof is relatively good.
With them going up there, we have a lot of, sort of like on the act bar, a lot of screws that need to be replaced and what have you, and so that, we'll phase that in, but mainly around each of those deals, and it just happens. So anyway, hopefully, we'll get it fixed for the long term.
Sure you will.
I check in with all my liaisons, go to all the meetings, enjoy all of it. I love it. To me, that's kind of a highlight of being a commissioner. I enjoy it, except the second half of UGRI meetings. It's all their stats are in the lab. Those are, that's not real fun, but UGRI meeting was a great meeting that had some good speakers there. They are always, I think at this point, especially looking forward, thinking about how they're going to be utilized in all of this going forward and to the future of Kirk County, and I appreciate the work that they're putting in over there, so.
I don't have anything.
Scheduled a couple of meetings in the future for the airport board, their board meeting. The next one will be 19 November in the morning at 8:30, all 10, and then for the animal control, we have one scheduled in January for our actual board meeting, so it's kind of a long overdue on that one. But we've had plenty of information and exchange back and forth for the build, so we'll call it good.
So with that, the last thing on the agenda would be executive session. Do we have anything for executive session today?
Yes, sir. I have a brief conversation I'd like to have with you guys if that's possible.
And so this is going to be consultation with attorneys.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back in executive session.